Pledge of Omissions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind council to turn your cell phones to either off or vibrate, please. Motion to approve the agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second? Moved in second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Approve the minutes from last meeting?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Second? Moved in second to approve the meetings from last meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion passed. Payroll, Chris, how about that, all of them? Okay, payroll's been handed in, the only one I didn't have was this one, I don't have the uh, and I don't know if these are one of the three or not.
No.
We'll have to, we'll have to look, so. Okay, bills to be paid, Franny?
Yep, they're all there, my man, there's a lot of them.
Oh, Franny, don't tell me I'm gonna waste my ink again.
Now, if you look though on the top, there, those of all are already been paid.
Yeah.
Those top, uh,
Hundred, twelve.
Shit, there's
Sixty-one.
Two hundred and
Well over that.
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand, almost three fifty.
Majority of that is up there. Most of what we have actually to pay is there in the bottom and it's not it's not ridiculous this, this month, but it is. If you look at the cook distributing cookies and corn belt, the tippere mates, those are something that we've been doing for several years now. We've got, had two more to do for corn belt or cookie cooks, I can't remember which one.
Cookies cooks.
Yeah, they go till fifteen and then, and uh, corn belt or, yeah, corn belt is sixteen and then cookies is eighteen when they're done, so. That, that money comes out of the tip account, so we've got, we've got that money, that doesn't have anything to do with our checking account. And if you look down in the little further INS group, park per million, that twenty-nine hundred dollars, that's gonna come out of the park account, so that doesn't come out of our checking account either, so. That makes it even, even less that we actually have to pay.
What is the shower shut testing? Electrical supplies, can you tell me, Franny?
Um, those are the uh covers for electrical lines and stuff.
Where's that at?
Gloves and
Uh, it's about
About five from the bottom.
Yeah.
Oh.
Electrical gloves and bags and wire covers.
Something that Myron
Tech tech gear that you send in to have test, tested to make sure that it's still good.
That's fine.
Who's the drug test for?
Myron.
No, we had one for
That's right.
We have one for a couple of the employees, but we really can't tell you who they are, I just, they came back uh, negative, so, we're good. No, we were gonna have Albert tested, but
I give a damn. It'll pass.
I'd rather have favor tested myself.
Do that one or no?
Yeah. Yeah, it might be questionable then.
They don't count black valve, do they?
Healy, uh, what we have done for Healy?
Just saying.
Okay. Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion, if there's no other questions, on the bills to be paid?
I wouldn't Wait a minute here, do you have the bills?
No, I don't.
We gotta add one. Will kill me if I don't do this.
Well, it's gonna kill you.
Well, it's you, not me.
How you doing, that's good. How you doing, that's good?
Good.
Good?
The guy started exercising, I have crutches, I don't know if it's wrong here.
Rob brought this over today for the pool. Well, I guess not just the pool or ladder, it's just Jamboree's bill.
We had a Jamboree Foods bill on there for four ninety-four fifty-eight.
That'd be for pool supplies and?
Uh, pool supplies and just city.
Libraries.
Library and
Okay.
Stuff like that.
Four what?
Four nine
Four nine four point five eight.
Uh, motion to approve the bills to be paid, plus the addition?
What's that, what's that total, Franny?
It is four three one zero nine six point six seven.
Moved in second to approve the bills, or no, I guess in second.
I did.
Or Ron, okay. Uh, moved in second to approve the bills to be paid, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Okay, that's covered, CDVG project and uh, I, I hope the update and the approve the pay request for King, uh, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but Sunquist is down there and, or no, uh, yeah, Sunquist, they've been doing the, the well deal and, yeah.
Ben, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Ben's uh, here tonight for Joe, Joe had another meeting and, so if we have any questions, we'll talk to Ben.
Are you as good as Joe?
Well?
Huh?
Find out.
Well, that's, well, that's what we're digging for.
Um, I got copies here, looks like he sent me the four copies of the
Yeah, we're gonna get those, get those signed for ya, uh, you guys have that in here too, that you can look at? Fifty-three thousand five forty-three twenty-four is the total on that. If you guys have any questions, I think, you know, quite a bit of that was uh, stored material that they've got down there that Dave wanted to, wanted to be paid for, so. And then the well, the well is dug, right?
Is dug, yes.
But uh, what do they have to do yet?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Had a good twenty-four hour pump yet.
Yeah, they gotta do their pumping.
There was surge today, so.
Is that what they were doing today, Franny? Okay.
Did they get the pump in today? No.
They won't put that until it's all done.
Yeah, they gotta, they gotta put the, across the road and get that rubbing on.
They won't put the, what I mean, all done, it all has to be purged and cleaned and like they're doing today, they don't wanna use new rubber to clean that, to get a little bit maybe for that.
But Joe thought that they were thirty-two percent done with the, with the well, so, that's what they put in there, thirty-two percent of.
The amount that they would like to be paid is fifty-three five four three point two four, is that correct?
Yeah, not for the well, but for, that's for Dave and the well.
Correct, that's correct.
Alright, that's the total.
Okay. Questions, council? Anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Do I need a signed copy from you, or?
I think what we'll do is, is get them signed and uh, give you
We'll need council approval first, soon as we get that done, then we'll have Chris and I, we'll both probably sign them and
Yeah, I think we'll just keep one and give you three, I'm, I'm gonna make Joe can do whatever he needs to do with them.
I'd make a motion to pay King's contract here of fifty-three five four three point two four.
Okay. Any further discussion? Gary, Albert, Ron, any questions? If not, I'd entertain a second.
Second.
Moved in second to pay King's request?
Pay request number two.
Uh, pay request number two, fifty-three point, or fifty-three thousand five hundred and forty-three point two four? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay?
Let's sign it right now.
Yep, right now, yep. You wanna bring those around now, my boy?
Yeah, see, we don't need to sign them. We just get, we just get a copy.
Oh.
Okay, that's funny. Cause all they have on that's
There's a line, is there?
No. No. Katie signed it and Joe signed it, so. Yeah, but let's sign it anyway. Just for giggles. Chris can sign it also.
Well, I cannot like presidential pens or anything like that. It has a roll pin, or what?
Different colors, huh?
Yeah.
Should be for, for the cash.
Okay, as soon as Chris is done
And if you're really excited about saying what you want me to say, but otherwise you do as you please.
Hang on for the ladder.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Tell Joe I'll have a word with him later.
Okay.
And so will Chris.
Have a good rest of your evening. Yep, you too.
Okay, discuss approved street repair costs, Chris?
Yeah, so, the first page there, page eight, you can see we got a proposal from Blacktop Services. Uh, and what we did was we asked them to bid on the exact same thing that Staybuilt bid on. Fifth Street, um, no, yeah, Fifth Street from Center to all the way to Pool Drive, uh, Stewart Street and a couple of different places, and Ward Street, one block, so this is, um, I think it's seven blocks.
This is what you and I talked about any minute.
Figured it out. The uh, that's, and that's the twenty thousand eight eighty-six eighty. We've, we've talked kinda all along about spending twenty-five thousand dollars, so I said, I said to this guys, you know, do me a favor and figure out Fourth Street, two blocks of Fourth Street in there, uh, on the east side of Center Street, and see what that's gonna cost. And so, if you add the two together, you're twenty-seven thousand five hundred bucks, just about, uh, from Blacktop Services. If you scroll down just a little bit further on page nine, you can see, uh, what's called a level and seal of Fifth Street. Uh, Fifth Street's the one that goes by the Catholic Church and the, and the Lutheran Church, and that's the one that's got the, um,
Humps.
Yeah, the humps, whatever you wanna call it, the, the cracks all the way across the street, and if you drive down that street with any kind of speed, it's pretty rough. So, the level and seals what we did out here on Main Street, that'd be forty-four thousand bucks. Not sure that that's uh, you know, it's definitely not something we wanna do this year.
I don't think so, but
Um, and, and both of the, both of the guys that I talked to, this guy and the guy from Staybuilt, said that Fifth Street is actually in good shape other than those
Needs leveled up or whatever, yeah.
And they said it slows the traffic down.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, Albert, that slows the traffic down.
Yeah, the road itself is in good shape, so, so we really don't have to do anything with that if we don't want to.
I think, because it's kinda like Ota Bolt, you get dips and
So, so then let's just, let's take on option two, let's look at uh,
Option one.
Option one and the other ones there, which is twenty-seven thousand three hundred bucks roughly. So then if you page down to page ten, um, you've got the exact same quote there uh, from Staybuilt for
Twenty-three.
Just under twenty-four thousand. Now, I've asked Staybuilt to uh, also bring some asphalt in to patch, you know, some of those, some of those holes on Fifth Street. They're getting pretty good size, so if you see a photo of those, they're just gonna still be there.
You gotta fill the hole first before you put a seal on it.
I've asked them, I've asked them to put that cold mix or whatever in those holes, so we are gonna have, it is gonna be more than the, than the quote right here. Uh, and you can see asphalt patching in place, three seventy-five a ton, so whatever they bring up. I, I talked to him today and I said, I think a ton would do it pretty easy, those are pretty small holes.
Yeah.
What do you think, Rick?
A ton and a half, yeah.
You know, a lot better than I do.
Same game.
The holes on like Fifth Street, you know, across Center Street there.
Not that many holes there.
It'll be hole by this year.
They're not very deep.
Six inch.
You think a ton, you think a ton of uh
Take a load of cold mix.
Cold mix, it
And it could be a ton.
Well.
If you don't fill them before you go over the top, you're trouble.
So I'm just gonna have them bring up a ton and, and we're gonna go from there.
Oh, we'll still be under around twenty-five thousand, what we
Kind of what?
Huh?
Cold mix?
Yeah.
Cause we'll, don't have them bring nothing like that, we'll put that in.
You will.
Does it got it in the contract?
Yes.
Actually, actually, it's, it's twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars even. If they bring up a ton of cold mix, it'll be another three hundred and seventy-five bucks. Yeah, cause we can't get it for much cheaper than that, can we?
And they said they'd put it in, Hoppy.
Yeah, and they'll put, they'll put it in for that three seventy-five ton, so. I figured we just have them do it while they're here, um. So, uh, the next thing I gotta tell ya is that if we approve this tonight, they will be here in the morning.
I should say the equipment's set down here, isn't it?
You gotta notice that.
Here's what I told the guy, I said, I said, stop, we wanna have this done before fall. We wanna have it done when it's hot out. He said, he said, we can be there the first week in July, if the weather holds. Well, then it started raining and I'm like, okay, well, we didn't have our council meeting, now we got it now. He said, well, can we come up tomorrow morning? I said, if the council approves it, you guys can come up tomorrow morning, but if they don't, then no. So, if you guys approve this, they'll be here seven-thirty in the morning, what it sounds to me.
Council, got any objections to that?
These, these are the guys who did Fair, Fairview Street and Sixth Street last year. They really, really did a good job.
The way they did the alleys, I would
I'd make a motion to approve Staybuilt's construction companies contract to do uh, the streets we have, have listed on the, the contract.
Any other discussion?
I'll second it.
And moved in second to accept Staybuilt's bid for I don't wanna say Chris.
Twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one.
Yeah, twenty-three thousand, well, plus the three seventy-five, yeah, plus the three seventy-five.
Cold patch.
Yeah. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? Okay. Pool accounting, Franny, I, I've been getting these on my email and I've been neglecting to get these up to you, is this kinda what you're looking for, is this doing good?
Well, it's way, way better than I've seen before, so.
Franny, if you look at the bottom of that, that fifteen sixty-eight forty-five, those are the, well, actually just go down to page thirteen. And you can see, you can see fifteen seventy sixty-four is what we spent. Um, and that was just in June. Uh, and then if you go back up to that first page, the fifteen sixty-eight forty-five is what we took in in these three weeks right here.
That ain't bad, that, yeah, like you say, Franny, that's a lot better than what you ever seen in, how many years you been on the
And actually, uh, you know, you, you can compare those two kinda, they're, and they're almost exactly the same thing. But, but it's not like they went and bought fifteen hundred dollars worth of food and then they went and sold it, and then they're gonna go buy some more, you know, that you tend to have to keep ahead of that.
Yeah, enjoy.
Is there anything more that you, you seem to be the big pusher on this, Franny, and I, and I agree with you.
It was just nice to see, you know, all I ever, I ever saw was expense, I never saw
No, no, I, no, I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Thought it'd be good to be able to see income off of it, or, you know, to see exactly, the, the worst thing I wanted to see happen is, we're spending all this money on food and we're not getting half, half our income back off of it, that's what my, you know, what
Rick, have you got anything to add? You know, you're kinda a big advocate down there too, so. If you want something more, you just gotta let me know, cause I will let Megan know.
This looks new.
Okay, that, that, that I'm very happy with, uh, you want a motion to approve the pool accounting, or just leave it go, or?
No.
Okay. Discuss Lakeview Police Report Letter to Dwayne Zigman and JR Labelle.
So you can see the letter that we sent out, and I, I think we had this on the last meeting too, uh, but they actually got it. We know they got it, cause Dwayne's called several times about, are you gonna charge me forty-five dollars if I call the police, and so, we continued to tell him, yes, if you call the police, we are gonna charge you forty-five dollars, and, uh, so. I don't think it's, I don't think it's actually helped a lot, although he's not calling the police, now he's calling here, so.
I will, I will tell you, I was at the demo, or not the demo, really, but the, I figure a race is Saturday, and the police force from Lakeview was sitting there, and that was Helmick and Nate Beckman and Roy Skinnerman and John Meister and all those guys, and I said, guys, gotta drop what you're doing, you gotta get up there, there's a parking issue up, and uh, I won't, I won't tell you what the experts were on that. So, I think they were very happy that, that we took this approach. I would, I would like to hear from each of the council to tell me, what do you guys think?
Has it helped any?
In my opinion, yes, I think so, yes.
It has caught, helped him to call, but
Yeah.
He still parks, they both still park in the street.
Yeah, still drive it, well, you know, it's a public deal, unless you put a yellow deal around there, we're not gonna do that. No.
So, Dwayne's big deal is now, um, you know, if, if uh, JR's wife has to have somebody from Home Health come, they always park between the two driveways. Well, we painted that yellow a couple of years ago, and so that just pisses them off. Well, we painted it yellow so you guys couldn't park there, not anybody else, so.
Well, I suppose they need to park some way, so, home health, yeah, what do you do?
They're, they're there to work, so I don't have a problem with them there.
Does anybody know why Dwayne will not park in his driveway, or his garage?
Let, let me just tell you what I've learned about Dwayne in the
Cause he's a moron.
In the four years, that's right at the top of the list, but here's, here's Dwayne's biggest deal. Dwayne wants everybody to pay attention to him, and if people pay attention to him enough, then he'll find something else to bitch about, so they'll pay attention to that. That's all, that's all it is.
You hit it pretty good.
So, and so, so the thing here with, with us talking about him in a council meeting, he doesn't like that. Because then everybody in the county knows it. Well, so that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna talk about it in a council meeting.
Let me tell council, uh, two, I believe it was two weeks ago, I went up there to Gary Schmitz's house to drop off my Sunday who those trucks and what time they're leaving, and I got stopped by JR Labelle, and he called me a spineless mayor, because there wasn't nothing I was gonna do, because Dwayne was illegally parked, and, so I called, oh, I gotta hold Albert, and Albert and I drove up there and, and uh, JR was very Yeah. Thank you, Albert, I didn't wanna say that. And he called, he called me and Albert, everything but a white man, and uh, we, when Albert and I left, Albert says, what are you gonna do, Steve, and I said, well, I tell you what, I'm, I am gonna call the police. So I called the police, Nate Beckman come over, him and I went up there. Nate did get Dwayne to open the door. Dwayne said, I will move my car if you're gonna do something with that white car, because the white car of Mr. Labelle was parked farther away from the curb than is actually legally law out. And I talked to Lori, and I said, Lori, if I can move that within eighteen inches of curb, you're fine. Like, which I did, for them, and uh, that seemed to resolve the issue, and, and I went out and talked to Chris, and of course Albert and I know talked to Chris and stuff, so we kinda got this thing put on hold, and now that we've, we've done this, I, I think this has made a better thing. Are we ever gonna get this issue resolved? I don't know.
Nope, not as long as they're living now.
Two baseball bats. I mean, all it is is, it's a game. Big game, if there's one thing, the other one does something to, to work the other one off.
Well, I guess JR, JR's no better than Dwayne.
No, you're right.
He exits on his I, I guess the other issue that I wanted to bring up is when I called, I called the comm center, I called nine-one-one to see who was on duty here for Wall Lake, and she said, uh, Nate Beckman, and she said, what, what's the problem there? And I said, well, I said, the kids aren't playing well again, together. And that's all I said, I said, the kids are not playing well together again. She laughed at me so hard, and she said, you're talking about Zigman and Labelle. Now, when I say the kids aren't playing well, how would the lady up there know that I'm talking about Labelle and Zigman? Other than she's had so many calls about this whole situation, so I thought that was kinda ironic. And I agree with everybody in council, it's not just one, it's the other one. Cause when one does something, the other one does something to piss the other one off, and it's just a back and forth issue, so.
It's just sad that we have to bring this up every council meeting.
Yeah.
There are, there are way more important things that we can do. This, you know, this is gonna be an ongoing deal until
I was gonna drive up there this morning and look, because somebody called this morning and said there was a problem, and I didn't drive up, but I, I, I spaced it off, I was gonna drive up and see once, but I spaced it off.
Car was parked
JR was
On the house.
JR was actually
JR was on the curb.
So I, I did drive up there, cause I dropped a truck route off and gave Sunday to Gary, and, and I did look, so. I think, this is the way to handle it, isn't it, council? You know, that's council, hasn't ever
It's gonna be very open and public about it, and
Yep.
And they're gonna know that uh
They're getting
Everybody kinda's gonna know what's going on.
And I, I, I hope that this goes out on Curtis's blog, that when I say the kids, and everybody in the county knows
Baseball bat, will ya?
No, put it in there.
When, when I see something about the kids not playing well, everybody in the county knows who it is.
Who it is.
So, and that's terrible, I wouldn't want my name recognized as that, but, okay. Uh, we're gonna move on, is, is anybody else got any discussion on that?
No.
I think we beat that horse to a dead pulp, so, electric update, electric apprentice.
Yeah, so, really the only reason why this is on here is at the last meeting, uh, council asked me to bring back the recommendation of who, not necessarily who, but what type of person we should hire to help Myron. Whether it should be an electric lineman, or whether it should be an electrician. So, you know, we, we had a work session, we talked about that a little bit, uh, Rick and, and uh, Myron and I have, have talked quite a bit about it.
Have you talked to council, let's council come in individually, or not you?
No, uh, but, but we have talked a little bit in, in a couple of meetings. My thought is, we need to hire and the reason I say that is because every time that you talk to Myron about, uh, you know, what's, what's the pros and what's the cons, the biggest thing that I hear every single time when he talks about is the training. If you get a, if you get a lineman, you have to train him, if you get a, a kid right out of high school who, or out of college who's a lineman, you have to train him. If you get an electrician, you have to train him. So, we're gonna have to train everybody that we hire, so let's hire an electrician who Myron could train,
Train in our base.
We can send into IMU, and then if we have an issue with the lighting in here, or a switch or something, we can send him to go fix it.
Yeah, tell him.
Well, plus the fact
Myron could fix it, but
Yeah, I think Myron
Plus the fact that I think you have to look at, Chris, and I think council will agree with me, is if you hire the electrician, and we've got him, his education and stuff, and he's following in Myron's footsteps, what's to say he isn't gonna stay here, correct?
Well, that's what we kinda hope.
You never know.
But you never know, you're right.
They get highly educated and have more money.
Well, it's like you say, we can, we can both sides, we can, you know, he, Myron knows the, the high voltage stuff, but the backside of his hand, an attrition or anything.
And then
And he should know
One thing, I, I even talked to Mark about this, and Mark brought up something that I hadn't thought about, but you know, if you hire an electrician, and they work together, then not only will Myron be training the electrician, but the electrician will be training Myron. And they come down and work on something, on a secondary service, or a panel, or something.
But he's a groom, he's already been groomed for this city, so I think he would more like to stay with this city, rather than try to move.
Well, that's what, that's what you would certainly hope.
We're hoping, but no guarantee.
And, yeah, sure, it's never a guarantee, but
Yeah, we got, did beat fuck up the We got a big haircut guy, but he never moved, who's hoping he would?
Stay a year old and
So yeah, Franny, to, to talk about that, uh, the next thing that I was gonna say is, uh, you know, do you guys want me to, to start advertising for an electrician, or, you know, and where do we wanna do that? Do we wanna do that on IMU website, or do we wanna do it locally in papers around here, how do, how do we really wanna go about doing that?
Do we have some people under qualified, Chris?
Oh, sure we do, we've got, we've got
But we gotta open it up.
Huh?
We gotta open it up.
Yes.
We have the right to refuse, but we have to open it up.
It'd be nice to have somebody who would qualify
I would say put it in the paper, and I guess you wanna do IMNU, or do that too, and
Do we wanna do that broad spectrum, Franny?
I'm not, I'm just asking.
I don't know if we need to go that far.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we wanna do that.
What is it gonna, I mean, it
No, it doesn't cost us time. You're right, it doesn't.
It's just not gonna cost us anything to do that, it's just, that way we're not gonna get put It's just not gonna cost us anything to do that. It's just, that way we're not gonna get put in the bus. Well, you didn't go.
Okay, yeah. See where you're coming from, yeah. We need to go broad, broad spectrum.
You didn't give me the chance.
But like Franny says, it doesn't hurt. I mean, even, even if we do get something from somebody from Creston or something, we'd call them saying, you know, we're decent.
This doesn't work out.
And how do you know? Maybe he worked out great and he'll take the lower wage just to move to Wall Lake.
Well, it's a pretty good town.
Who the hell knows? I, I agree with Franny. Now that Franny's explaining, I, I agree with Franny. I agree with Franny. That's exactly right, so. Go ahead and advertise for that. Have you run a motion for that, Chris? Okay, council giving you approval to do that, so. Discuss sump pump water and streets and storm pipe locator.
Yeah, so we had this on the last meeting too and one of the suggestions was to find the, the storm sewer pipe that goes behind Lody's house and see if that sump pump can be dumped into there instead of at the street. So I called Kenny and asked him to go locate that and that hasn't been done yet, so.
What's he dragging his feet or?
Franny, you're pretty sharp on this kinda stuff. If we could find that deal and we just take a postal robber and go down to the pipe and fill it up with rock, you know, so, so to the tile. Would you build a pump in, in there and would that get rid of the water? You think that would get rid of the water?
As long as you got a check valve in it and a secondary outlet for when it fills up.
Gotta have a check valve.
Cause if when it fills up and it won't, if it's not gonna take the pipe, you can't pump it in there.
Right, right, the full. The only thing I'm saying that I would say normally being we do have a dam pretty well, like we had all this rain and the dam hardly got it more than two feet in. That means the, the water's going out good, you know. Now, if we get six feet, I guarantee he's gonna back up on me that out. But I just wondered, would that be option during a postal, we don't, we can locate it and.
Nobody's opposed again.
And I'd even throw a little bit in just to get over cause my brother-in-law's on me and I, I do feel sorry for him with all the deals, but but if that would work, it's something to look at.
I just wrote down favor was gonna pay for us.
No, no, I said, it shouldn't cost too much if we can locate it and, and drill a postal down and it's probably six feet down.
Then if you're gonna take a deal, take a postal and put rock in, why not put the pipe in and the check?
Well, you can do that too. I didn't know what it took, but remember it took.
You just as well put the pipe in there.
Well, that may be true too. It's cement pipe, you just gotta make sure we don't knock the whole tile apart.
That's what I thought.
You don't knock the whole tile apart and then I basically place the town off.
Jerry thinks it's a ten inch.
It goes around me my house. It's either eight or ten. I'm pretty sure it's a big one. Might be it.
You know, Franny, you know, right off the top, you read?
Where it's at or?
No, how big? You sure it's six?
No, I know.
But I don't think I'm small.
You might be able to get in your ear.
I don't know if I'd make that.
Depends on what your ears, you might not be able to get that out.
Can, can Rick do anything then to?
Well, we just gotta wait for Kenny to get up there and.
Well.
He told me two weeks ago, he's been working on doing it, hasn't done it yet.
I called, I called him the next day after we got out of the council meeting and, and asked him and called him a couple of days after that and.
We got, we got guys that can witch that where that tile lines at. I think we got the guys capable. But there's water running through it.
I would say call him, Chris, and tell him this is a immediate need to be done type thing.
You know, my only other concern with this whole deal, and I, I don't care how we handle this deal or whatever, but you know, you look up there on the north end of third district right now, we've got water running across the street. Pretty soon somebody's gonna complain about that. They're gonna want to take care of that.
Yeah.
They're gonna go to Stewart Street, they're gonna take care of that. And pretty soon we're gonna have five thousand dollar wrapped up in this deal. It really doesn't hurt anybody.
I guess Stolberg jumping me about it.
Or Franny, what's his, what do you think of the other option? Just say you went in there, there's, it's going down.
Well, what we're gonna do is we're gonna find out what the tiles are. We're gonna run a pipe down to it if, if it works and put it back Jeff in and also secondary relief valve or secondary relief that it can.
Well, we could just cut a little trough there in front of Russell with a power saw and chip it out.
We just spent a bunch of money fixing that road.
You know, and, and not, not, not the picking on Gary, but when you mow your lawn, do not blow the grass on the street.
Well, very little. I catch all I can.
But there, and that's.
I always go three times around.
Always that issue right there.
And I put it in the paper a lot, how many times?
Well, I guarantee you what, I don't have much more grass. If you want some water.
I'm not picking on you.
But I know, yeah. Listen, I get ninety-five percent of it. I'll guarantee you that. Very much grass in the street.
There was grass there, cause I just noticed the last time and it started, and that's where it starts.
I'm gonna back Franny up because I drove by the same.
It was a goddamn little, didn't mount to nothing.
I walk by there every morning.
That little bit, ask Rick. That little bit, the house I held on, I don't know.
Everybody knows a little bit, but it shouldn't be a lot.
That's exactly right.
Whatever.
Now, we gotta fix that pipe by running it over there.
Who's we?
The city? The city.
Hell, no.
Okay.
That's not our cost.
Then, then we shouldn't have an expense on it there. Shouldn't have, no.
No.
No, we shouldn't have to do that because.
No, but what, what Franny's saying is, is we're taking this time right now to talk about this issue and try to figure out how to get it fixed. And I don't think it should be any of Lody's cost either. I don't think they should have to pay for anything. I think if Russ wants it fixed, Russ should have to pay for it. And I suggested that at the last meeting and I got looked at like I was a dumbass. But what Franny's saying is we're spending this time right now talking about this, then there's one, there's one up on Seven Street. We're gonna spend a bunch of time talking about that one. And then there's one over on Stewart Street. We're gonna spend a bunch of time talking about that one. This is exactly what the ordinance tells these people to do.
Put it in the street.
Run it on the street.
As far as I'm concerned, it ain't not hurting anything.
Okay. This year, the white water does not get stagnant.
No.
It hasn't yet.
So you're getting pretty scummy because you're getting a lot of water.
I'll tell you what, Pat Jacobson walked over and said, you know, it's unbelievable, but I don't have mold or anything in my, my basement's dry.
Really?
It's just, it's just that much of a draw from it that's actually stagnant.
You get it drawn from across the street too there?
Could be, cause I don't have any trouble with my crawl space anymore, so you never know.
Listen to this shit.
I'm piping my water over there.
I'll tell you what, it's hard to beat them up the street.
Okay, I, I agree with Franny. We beat this horse to a dead pulp too, so.
We'll need to fix it some more.
Discuss.
Discuss the food tip.
Tip, rebate, payments, Cook siding, Cook's food, Cookies food and Corn Belt.
Yeah, that's page fifteen and it's crooked, so you have to go up to view and rotate.
I can look at it.
So we got, we got, we'll take our time here, guys. Basically all, basically all this is, is just a calculation of how we come up with payment and it's taken from taxes that are paid and so. I mean, you guys can look at it. There's really, there's really nothing to argue about or anything. It just, if you look under the, the, I think it's the twenty thirteen tab there. I better, wait, I better look at this actually, no, I don't know what I'm talking about. Yeah. It's the twenty thirteen tab up there on the top right. That's where we're gonna get the payments from and that's where we get the eighteen hundred and eighteen dollars for Cooks, eighty-eight, twelve for Cookies, forty-three seventy-six for Corn Belt. That's where we get those on the bills to be paid, so.
We don't need to roll turn around.
No, we already did that. No, I just wanted to give you guys this so you can see where it comes from and, and why it's there. And no, I really probably should tell you when they're gonna end, but we'll do that next year when we pay them, so. Cause I think we've, we've only got one more payment left for, I think it's Cooks. Cooks building out there, I think that ends in fifteen and then Corn Belt ends in sixteen and Cookies ends in eighteen. So, but this all comes out of the tip account. We've already got the money stored there, so.
It is, we gotta.
No, no, we don't have to really plan.
Teach you how to run a computer there.
You're gonna, be, you're going to go across that.
Yes, I understand. I know what to sell them out.
We don't, we don't have to have any motion or anything. We've already done it on, no, we've already done it on the bills to be paid.
Okay.
So this is just information to show the guys how we got to where we got to.
Okay, that's fine.
So now everybody can go rotate their view back. And this time it's counterclockwise.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay, discuss approved park shelter house in Will McGosh. I thought Dawn was gonna be here tonight and I guess I'll speak a little bit.
I can see, I, I know that she didn't have to come.
Okay, well, I'm gonna let you start. There's a couple of things that I wanna follow up with. Uh, go ahead, you start.
So the reason this is on here is, is Dawn and Travis have been working really hard and, you know, the last time they were here, they were forty-seven thousand dollars short. I'm not exactly sure what the number was, but you know, forty-five thousand. Between then and, and now, I'm not gonna tell you an exact number, but it's around twenty-five thousand dollars that they've went out and raised. So they're somewhere around twenty, twenty-two thousand short right now. And what, and what they, what they have asked me to talk to you guys about, and, and I think this is a good idea. They told Jamie to go ahead and get started with the building, but, but let's not do any of the parking yet. Parking was twenty-five thousand roughly, I think, and.
That's through what, that, that, excuse me. That's what threw it back up to that forty thousand dollar level or forty-five thousand dollar level. Is because, because of the parking. Go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
And so, so Jamie's like, well, you know, if you don't do the parking this year, it's gonna be more expensive next year. I may not be able to get it in right away, blah, blah, blah. So the group would really like to be able to say, let's just do the whole thing. And if council will say, we'll carry you guys until we get the Will McGosh grant, assuming that we're gonna get the Will McGosh grant again, which.
Presumably.
Yeah, we should.
Well, except to the three.
But you never know.
Three people, they, they're the ones making decisions. We don't.
If we, if we will, okay to carry them until we get that grant and then use that money to pay off the rest of that parking and stuff.
And the parking, to re, to redo the parking. And, and that, excuse me for Chris to interrupt you, but that come from me and I'll tell you why, is because I, I talked to him and I said, you know what? I talked to Franny Radel so many times during council meetings that Franny says, you know what, when we put a project off, it always costs us, what, anywhere between two and five thousand dollars more the next time that we go around it. And then we bitch and moan because we should have done it the first time and we didn't. So what we're trying to do is get, we're trying to get it, I don't know what it is, bunching it in or, or done or what have you. Now, the next thing that I don't know if Chris knows or not, but we're gonna get seventy-five hundred dollars from CPS and that's twenty-five hundred dollars from you uptown Franny, twenty-five hundred from us out south and twenty-five hundred from Dean. Dean, which is, he's in a different category. Can you explain? If you wanna explain that, Franny, boy. Yeah, I can't explain that either. But Dean's in a different, he's in a different category because he's, he's the big, the big chief down, so. Uh, talked to Greg Schmitz. They're waiting on the estate from Schmitz's estate to be finalized and they will have a family meeting. They will not give me a dollar figure on what they are gonna donate because they don't know at this point in time because of Jerry's death. We are gonna get some money from, from the Jerry Schmitz family, okay? If I tell you right now it's a thousand to ten thousand, I don't know. I, I wouldn't be lying. I don't know at this point in time. Uh, talked to Hallett Construction. Uh, we're trying to work them to get a donation out of them. I haven't got a dollar figure out of them yet because they're doing the same thing we had to do out south. We gotta run it through the channels and it's, Tammy just told me tonight, it's gotta go through Ankeny and from Ankeny, it's gotta go out to is it South Carolina or North Carolina? It's one of them. It's one of them. So I can't give you a dollar figure on that amount either. So I think we're looking very, very strong at the donations there. So I don't think it's gonna be as bad as what you folks think, so. I would really appreciate it if you would, if the city would.
I think the committee should ask the three that are head of Will McGosh's committee that are in charge of that and ask them if that, that we could probably get some money from them this coming year. Then you know exactly where you're at. They agree to say, well, we'll do something. Then we definitely know where to write track on this side of it. Cause they got the, they got the say so.
I don't.
They, they got the say so of that money.
Yeah, Jamie wants to know as soon as possible, but he wanted to know as soon as possible a week ago when we're just having our council meeting.
Is that parking in addition to?
Yes, yes.
Well, actually the, the parking was in the total bid that we approved. A month and a half ago or two months ago, yeah, something like that. So, yeah, that was in the total.
Franny?
Here's my take. I, I don't mean to sound mean or nothing, but, you know, when the city gets loan money, what do we do? We go borrow it. That's what we have to do.
Yeah, we have to borrow.
So let's say we, so cover among the twenty-five thousand, we not have to go borrow money. I mean, I guess that option there, you know, if they need to, they can, they should be able to borrow money. You know, I, I'm not, and I'd say I'm not trying to be mean on this or try to put this park deal off, but I just, you know, it's always, we always wanna fall back on the city. You know, this is a community project.
I actually talked to Rob today too. Rob couldn't be here today. He stopped in and said that he wasn't gonna be able to make it today. And he specifically talked to me about this and, and didn't really say anything other than, you know, I don't know if we'll make a decision about it tonight. But he said it's something that we certainly need to talk about now. So, you know.
You wanna go talk to Dawn and Travis, have them talk to the committee? And then we can bring this up at next council.
Talk to Chuck.
We'll cer, we'll certainly bring this up at the next council. But yeah, I think, I think if they go talk to the committee, I think that will help. And Franny's got a valid point too.
You know, I, I wanna agree anyway. I definitely don't wanna, you know, the parking's, that's.
Minor.
Well, it's not really minor. It's a pretty big deal when you look at it.
It is important.
Yeah, it's gonna take, if you don't do the parking, it's gonna make the building look like.
Look at, look at Lakeview when you have a big deal, but there are both sides of the streets.
It's like, cause their streets haven't been as wide as ours. They got more room.
I don't believe that at all, Gary.
In the room, in the room, run two cars through?
We got the, we got the whitest streets in the county.
Well, I didn't think ours is big as us right there at that park, at the shower. You run two cars, two and a half parking on both sides. In Lakeview, I don't think you can do it up here. Don't know. I never tried it.
Plus on both sides of the street, you got residential on both sides of that street.
Yeah, but it's, is it more than thirty-two feet? That's what ours is, huh? Thirty-two?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one?
No.
Well, if we don't approve this tonight, is that good enough?
No, it won't, it won't be too.
It, you know, Jamie wants to know, just so he knows. But it's not gonna, it, he's not gonna sit here and say, well, wait a minute now, if I can't do the parking, I gotta do something there. He's still gotta build a damn building, so.
Okay, that's.
The, the thing, the thing that Jamie wants to know, and Jamie and I talked about this three weeks ago, whatever. He, he wants to be able to cut a curb out so he, he can back trucks up in there. And if he can't do that, then it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be worse on the vehicles. I told him, cut the damn curb out. I mean, he's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna ruin it anyway.
Unless you guys break some jump. Wood or something, you got something there.
Again, I just wanna, you know, we, I, I don't wanna stop the project because I, they definitely think the parking's a pretty big deal, deal there. I don't wanna stop it. I think they should roll forward with it and come up with some type of deal to take care of it, but.
We'll figure something out, yeah.
And ask, ask that committee and see whether they'll, we'll be behind it. Cause we just pass it on. The council passes, they, they make recommendations, we pass it on.
You're not a liar, Franny. You're, you're right up in.
Well, I, I've seen us do this before. We gotta borrow money to pay our, our own bills, you know.
But I, I, I always, I guess I fall back on what you always say is, is if we're not gonna push forward, then take it off my table and, and don't, don't screw with me no more. So, but I agree with you. Let's, cause we can always look down the road and try and get that. And we don't have to, we don't have to shun the project, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we're gonna do.
We got three months before the start of doing the street anyway.
But I did give you an update. Uh, you know, we, we do have more money coming in every day and I'm waiting for Schmitz's to come across. They told me probably they have about a month and I don't know. It must be some really litigation with Jerry's.
Five days' time.
You know, and you know, Hallett's is like CPS. How long's it take you, Franny, to get a check from CPS? Okay, all right, we beat that horse to a dead pulp too, so. The chickens that are gonna be raised in Faber's house, who wants the eggs and who will collect them?
I can shoot them from mine.
So everybody, so everybody wants to know what the hell do we have this chicken ordinance on here for? Well, this is completely me. I've had several people ask me, call. I've had several people ask me, call me, uh, talk to me about, can I have chickens in town? And I can't tell them no. I mean, you read the whole ordinance here. No, no ordinance in our ordinance book says that you can't have chickens in town. What, the only thing it really says about chickens is is they can't shit on the sidewalk and they, you can't have so many feathers go down the uh storm sewer or the, or the sanitary drain, that's gonna plug up. And so, my thought is we need to get some kind of ordinance that says you can't have chickens in town or you can only have so many chickens in town or something.
I think we need none.
Albert, you're like a broad egg, what am I gonna do, buddy?
We have vaccinated every year, every year.
I think you're right, Franny.
You have them vaccinated for.
One of my first years as as mayor.
They got, they got a food, they're vaccinated. So, I.
But I remember.
We need to send the letter out, everybody's got dogs, they need to have a show with the vaccination.
Send the letter to them with the cats too.
Yeah, I agree with you, cats too.
You're about right, but.
Cause I hate cats.
We don't have any ordinance that says that they have to be vaccinated.
No, we have ours, no, Lakeview does, but we don't.
We, we need to make one.
State's got an ordinance, you had to have your cat's license and vaccinated.
Vaccinated, that's.
State's got an ordinance.
But Lakeview forces there.
Okay, so.
We need it forced out.
Okay, so, let's, let's talk about this, let's talk about this then just a little bit. We've got several things going on in town right now, right? I mean, who's gonna, who's gonna enforce this? Am I gonna enforce this?
LVPD.
Lakeview Police Department.
LVPD, isn't that what we hire them for, Franny? Comment, Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
I agree.
Gary?
Yeah, you gotta run, dog run loose, it's both take care of, right?
Yeah, that I don't have a problem with.
The other deal, that's a different.
How, how are you gonna be Rick's responsibility?
She's not your responsibility, I've been there for a year and the guy's left town. How are you gonna? I have two dogs, I take very good care of my dogs, I keep very close eye on my dogs, I keep vaccinations on one of my dogs.
You got your license for them?
Pay to have them de-fleet every year, cause dogs like that come by my house.
No cheap deal. Well, how does, how does they reinforce theirs?
There's dust more than when you.
Any idea?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, I know what they, I know what they do in their newsletter, they put a thing in there that says you have to have your licensed and and vaccinated. And it costs you seven bucks or whatever it is. How do you enforce that?
Yeah, I don't know how they do that either.
Johnny moves into town, he's got a dog, nobody knows it, honestly.
I think it's tough to enforce.
The big, you know, big thing, you know, again, we wanna do work on this chicken deal. And also, checking out an ordinance on the, I'm almost sure, Chris, there's something about.
How many dogs?
How many dogs or animals you can have in your house, like two dogs and cats, both.
I think it should be limited to dogs.
Cause I remember there's something, we talked about, or something, no, cause you end up with having to take them to the pound over in Lakeview and and who's, who stood the cost on that and stuff.
Rick, you should remember that, that was one of my, I think it was the first year I was.
Because I remember.
I'm almost sure there's something in the ordinance.
Now, when I was talking about, I was like, you pick it up all over the pound, that guy had it back in two, three days. And it's running down and the guy's gone. And it just pisses me off, cause it's not a bad dog, you just.
Just you don't take care of it.
Then it's gotta go to the pound though.
It's a mud, shepherd, looks like a shepherd.
Yeah, black, right? Country store?
Yeah.
He's a nice dog.
I tried to catch that dog so many times, it just.
Sure, you followed Be Claire up here one day.
Tried to catch him.
You come right up to me?
Tried to catch him. He won't let you.
He's been caught, I'll bet you I can catch him.
Yeah, I'll bet you, what do you wanna bet?
Oh.
I'll bet you a case of beer.
Bring the doggy tomorrow.
Be alive.
I don't care.
Stipulation, no, Albert, huh?
I'm not kidding, I've taken treats, given them to the dog and you try to reach for him and he's gone. Bring him in here, I'll give you a case of beer, I will, Curtis heard it, he's gonna put it on his website.
And then it will take him over there.
Watch, watch him, it'll be Milwaukee best, that's what I.
Back these chickens.
Yeah, I will have an ordinance at the next meeting for the chickens.
Thank you. And and chicken, how many dogs, three dogs.
And I will check on that too.
I I think it was four. Franny says four and he said, Rick thinks it's four.
Yeah, I think you're right, cause I I remember something.
Which has got plenty in my opinion.
Yeah.
Two, but I think that's one tremendous.
Yeah, cause I know there's a person over on the east side of town's got twelve or thirteen of them.
Okay, we got, we beat, we beat another dead horse. Uh, discuss elevator contract with Schindler.
This is something that came up at one of the meetings a while back and, you know, we talked a little bit about why we have a a contract and. So, you can see the email here on page eighteen, uh, it looks to be like they come, they can, they can do several different things. We have a contract with them right now, I believe it's sixteen hundred dollars a year roughly, not quite. Um, and that is for uh, whatever happens to the, to the elevator, they'll fix it. We can, we can do a inspection contract, it looks like it's gonna be sixty bucks a month, which is seven hundred dollars a year. Uh, yeah, which is mandatory, or we can do a maintenance contract, uh, which would be, you know, that's twelve hundred dollars. And that, that isn't, a maintenance contract isn't as extensive as a contract that we have right now for sixteen hundred. I think we leave it the way it is, honestly.
Those are the only, only people that do that, Chris?
Right now, they don't do anything, Rick, they come and inspect it basically, but if if something's broke, they'll fix it.
Okay, so if there's a weak cable or it needs grease.
It's all hydraulics.
Yeah.
It's not cable driven, it's hydraulic driven.
It's hydraulics?
It's just a hy- just a big hydraulic deal.
So, if there's a, hypothetically, there's a seal out in one of the hydraulics, will you fix that?
So, it, look, it says right here, Chris, I believe you currently have a full maintenance contract which recovers all major components and service calls within an eight-hour workday. So, our contract right now, whatever they have to fix, if it takes them less than eight hours, they fix it.
And that is something that we cannot.
No, I don't see why, and this is my opinion, counsel, why would you wanna deviate from that because, Franny, you can, you can tell them hydraulic seals and stuff go out?
Well, it's just, it's, it's state law, it has to be inspected, but there is a problem with it, it has to be fixed, so, there's no use us trying to.
Isn't, isn't that saving us money and?
I mean, we could, we could take off the maintenance contract and just keep the inspection contract, but again, it still needs to be.
And and really, you're saving nine hundred bucks a year to do that and then as soon as you do that, you know, something's gonna happen and then we're gonna have to fix the damn thing.
That's, that's exactly where Franny's coming from, so then what happens? Then you gotta pay what, fifteen to two thousand dollars to fix a damn thing and then what, what have we gained, nothing, right, Franny?
Two thousand eighty.
You know, when the state walks in here, they can look at, they go Schindler, they can show their control.
Not only the inspection, but repairs, ninety dollars.
We've done on the elevator.
Yeah, for ninety.
Falls all in one place and it just makes things a whole lot easier when things happen.
Right now, it's Schindler, baby.
Yep.
Yeah.
This is our argument.
They're, they're responsible for it.
It's just in our building.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a, actually, it's a headache off our mind.
Yeah, cause we don't have to worry about it, something happens, they got to fix it, leave things alone, if they ain't broke, don't fix it.
You wanna motion on that, don't you, Chris? I would think.
I would, yeah, all I have on here is discuss.
Okay, well.
We got time. We done it.
Well, we, yeah, okay, we'll put it on next meeting so we can get that passed.
Until this chicken starts laying.
We're really not.
I don't change them, doesn't.
It's the way it is, so we don't have to change them.
Okay, we'll just keep going.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, public forum, uh, if Chris has got some stuff, I'm gonna let him talk first and then, and then I've got some stuff I'd like to talk to you about.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I've got is uh, had a, a lady come in and ask me a question about a bench. She wants to get a bench for uh, for the city of Wall Lake and and her deceased husband's name. And uh, she wants to know how to go about doing it, like to put it uh, down there by docks, between docks and and uh, barbwire store and.
It's there already.
Is there ready?
There's one there already.
You just put it in.
Oh, what, really?
Oh, uh.
Well, there was one there before, wasn't there?
Yeah, there's another one, yeah, another one.
Roadie?
We got so many places for people to sit out there.
I don't have anything to talk about.
It's done, dude, thank you.
The only thing is the sign on you.
Oh, well then, okay. Um, Rick, I'm gonna open the door and then I want you to kinda go from there. You and I went and we looked at it last night, is our shelter house, um, and I'm gonna turn it over to Rick. Rick, you wanna tell him what you and I proposed?
Put uh bars or screens on the windows, a little bathroom, so we can't kick them out.
And then the other thing that we proposed is.
We're closing at five o'clock.
Yep, Rick can go open, open in the morning, eight o'clock, kids wanna go down there and play, cause it's summertime, you know, they wanna go down there and play. By five o'clock, when I come home from work, I'm going down, I'm gonna turn the thing, I'm gonna lock it up.
I think we have to.
Do we have a camera down there, Chris?
Yeah, we do.
Let's just sign it.
But, no, this is what Chris is gonna tell you, cameras.
We have, we have four cameras down there and and uh, they're, they're working just fine. The thing is, is going down there to watch it, it takes a lot of time to do that, first of all, second of all, and at night.
See, it's not, what Chris is gonna tell you is, it's not hooked to our internet, like the pool, uh, okay, I'm sorry, the pool is not. But these are up here, it's not hooked to the internet, so nobody can read it up here.
What's this up at the two twenty? Light them up.
And I don't know, when they put the fiber in, I had a more fiber in the.
I was gonna say, I thought we had fiber up there.
I had more conduit, but we didn't put the fiber, so we could hook it up someday to that.
You could do that and then you could read it right from here.
But that will cost us, is it so much a camera or is it so much a month?
See, it'll just be forty dollars a month.
No matter how many cameras.
No.
Okay.
It'll cost us forty dollars a month at the park and forty dollars a month at the pool, if that's what we wanna do.
Well.
We have any issues at the pool, have we?
Not yet.
No, um.
Not that I know of.
No, not.
We had to go watch a couple of things.
We gotta do, yeah, we gotta watch.
Unrelated incidents.
All right, but we've had more issues at the park.
Yeah.
Leroy Roider come to me last night and says, Dean, I'll go over and plunge it, I said, no, Leroy, you're a citizen. I contacted Rick, Rick says, I'll take care of it, but the one handle on the door was broke, you can't lock that bathroom. Uh, that's duct taped open, the other one, it was, it was full of toilet paper and and, excuse me, shit. And and it had to be plunged, it had to be fixed. And Rick is telling me that these kids come in with tree branches and limbs and they cover the cameras because they think you're watching them. Which you can't if you're not plugged in, but if we get that plugged in down here, now the one thing that that. Chris is telling me is, you might not be able to see who it is because of the darkness and the camera, uh.
Can we uh?
Put motion right in?
Motion, just check your lights out, I mean, I know they're gonna knock them out, but it'll be a little bit of a deterrence for a little bit.
You can set a, you can put a thing over them and so that they can't knock them out.
I think a big loud siren goes off, warning, lights off, flashes. We want something, we want something to scare the hell out of them. Not just gonna deter them.
It's pretty sad when you gotta do it, but.
Uh, yeah, it's very true.
It's a few individuals doing it, but any, a lot of people, that part about, the good kids pay for what's happened.
Yes.
Yeah, and we won't, we can't get rid of the kids that's.
Well, can you, can you put this in the back of your mind then and I'll, maybe I'll Chris put it on, on the agenda for next month or next meeting? Do we wanna pay the forty bucks?
I think yes.
Are we gonna have a brand new shelter house or is it gonna be?
The same thing's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, if if you'd like to.
Well, we can try it one way for a while and see how it goes, if it don't, we can switch it over and do it, put, put that cap, probably do it, you know.
What I told Chris is.
Try it for a while.
If Lacy's hired by the city, why can't she come in, cause I know Robin Corbin used to do it. She used to come in and and monitor these to see what was going on in our hallways, why can't she just pull them up quick and all she's gonna do is go through it, review it and. If there's some vandalism, let's nail the kids. Don't you agree? I mean, the city spent a gob of money.
Yeah.
And I just don't.
Look, what is your uh?
Do you need those?
Uh, switch on the, we're gonna send out the letters, Steve, for the, for uh, tearing houses down. Tearing out, tearing houses, we're gonna move, try to move on that at this next meeting.
What's that?
Tear these houses down and push.
You and I, you, you and I have got to.
We're ready to send the letters, so we're ready to go, gonna lock my chicken out though. Yeah, so we're gonna make a move next meeting.
But Gary, listen.
Or what are we gonna do?
We have, yeah, we have to go through the steps, this is not a, this is not a thing that we can send letters out to.
I told you, so I understand, I'm just saying, we're gonna, we are gonna keep moving forward.
This is gonna take us a long time.
A hundred thousand dollars a house?
Yeah, and and I talked to Warren already and Warren said, both of those houses are easily done, but we gotta go through the steps.
Yeah, so, we gotta give fifteen days and then we can.
Fifteen days is up July sixth.
So, we can go ahead from that.
Then you take your next step.
And then you take your next step.
You're gonna go to court.
I understand what you're talking about, I just, we are gonna move forward, that's what I'm on, we have heard from one of them.
Well, I got something I wanna bring up.
Yep.
I would like to get them people slowed down coming in from the north into town. They think that's a damn racetrack up there.
I come in the other way now, you come in.
Yeah, we come in out the other way.
I don't care, I want, I would like to see a stop sign right there where the black dock goes east.
Oh, my God.
Where, and where it's going south through town, they're gonna have to slow down then.
Yeah, we try to get one up to the country store and bang it fly and.
Yeah, they do come down pretty fast.
Oh, gee.
If you come down at a speed limit.
Forty mile an hour they're running through there anyhow.
They're trying to pass you.
Yeah.
Gotta see what they do outside of town.
I know what they do outside of town.
I always pull on, I'm telling her coming down fast, I pull in front of them, I do twenty-five.
I do too.
Yeah, ride my bumper.
I do too, I do too, Franny, I do the same thing.
I think again, and then I don't know, we got the last one from Sac City, didn't we, that speed deal?
Yeah.
That wouldn't be all.
Slow down, your speed is.
It don't do any good.
Yeah, it does, that does, does do some.
Give me right to.
You bet, if they, if it says, they're doing fifteen, it says, they'll tell you, and that, that doesn't make a difference.
And there's a bunch of kids in that, right in that block, and I'm afraid someday there's thirty-one laying there on the street without me there.
And I have a problem when I'm walking, I was, I know they're coming a little fast, I'll just move out to set, move toward the center of the street.
He is, he did.